Welcome and thank you for joining us for Conifer Area Council's virtual town hall meeting. We were so excited tonight to meet in person without masks, but then code red weather warning got in the way. So it is snowing on this Wednesday night, February 16th, 2022. I'd like to first shout out a very, very special thanks to Tiffany and Christie at RE/MAX Alliance for their community support of tonight's town hall meeting. So thank you, Christie and Tiffany. So what's going on around here? We have several updates from several speakers tonight. The first one, the Conifer Chamber speaker is not up here. Chamber Executive Director Brittany LaRue could not be here tonight, but she did give me a report, and here it is. Elevation Celebration is a free community street fair the last weekend in July on Sutton Road. Join us for Conifer Signature Summer Festival July 30th and July 31st, featuring the Elevation Run and Walk sponsored by Conifer Area Council and Club. Then there's live local music, craft beer, a kid area, and so much more. This event has something for all ages. Follow us on Facebook for all the latest updates. And for more community events and to see what our members are up to, check out the community calendar on the goconifer.com. So Brittany, thank you for that report. Next, we have RTD Director Peggy Catlin. Peggy?
Thank you, Shirley. A couple of things I wanted to report on, and I do not have a PowerPoint presentation, I apologize. One of the things that RTD has embarked upon is its Reimagine RTD, and there are two components that are coming up. One is a system optimization plan, and the other one is mobility plan for the future. The system optimization plan is really taking a look ahead for about five years. And given the fact that we've had dramatic reductions in ridership and funding, in part due to COVID-19, we're having to really take a hard look at what services we can provide. And so the system optimization plan is looking at those particular things. I would really encourage all of you to take a look at our interactive map. It is at rtd-denver.com. And if you scroll down on the page and link on the Reimagine RTD System Optimization Plan, you can link on any particular route, and I know of interest to most folks in Conifer and in Evergreen area are the CV and EV routes. But also, you can click on any route in the RTD system, and it will give you the status of the route itself and then what is planned as part of the system optimization plan. But I'm pleased to say that the Route CV, which is Pine Junction, Conifer into Denver, that the current service operates in the peak period. There are three trips in the morning and three trips in the evening. And as part of the proposed plan, that will remain untouched. So it will continue to have those three trips, crucial trips for commuters in the morning and evening. And same is true with the Route EV out of Evergreen into Denver. The same service will continue, three routes in the morning and three routes in the afternoon. I would like to say, however, that those routes are going to be monitored for ridership. But if you could, again, link on this interactive map for those people who maybe take a transfer or go someplace else in the county. It's a really useful tool, and it's actually kind of nifty if you want to play with it a little bit. And you can pull it up, and it will give you all of the details. So I would encourage you to do that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we have service changes three times a year. Those occur in January, which we just had, May, and then in September. And some of those are the changes that are affected by schools being out over the summer and then coming back in. But we don't have any changes to those particular routes in the mountain communities coming up for the upcoming May service plans. There aren't any changes proposed. So those are the main things I wanted to report on. And with that, I'll give you about 45 seconds.
Thank you, Peggy. That was really good information. We appreciate that. Next, we have Patron Experience Supervisor for the Conifer Library, Holly Rap. Holly?
Thank you, Shirley. At the Conifer Library, we have an exciting new children's program called the Conifer Creative Station. Please join us the second Saturday every month at 11:00 a.m. for a fun craft activity. And in addition to the Creative Station, we offer family story time every Saturday at 10:15. And everybody in the family is welcome to participate in engaging stories, singing, dancing, and more. You can visit our website at jeffcolibrary.com for more information or to register. And I hope we might see you all at Conifer Library soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. That is always very exciting to hear that. I've got a grandson that I have got to get up there and go to some of the things you're doing. Sounds wonderful. So next, I understand that there's quite a bit of new information to present from CDOT about Highway 285. So we have Jenna Spiker, Region 1 West Program Engineer, and Brian Meyer, West Program Manager, to talk about that. Jenna and Brian?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving us an opportunity to speak, and I'll turn it over shortly to Brian. But again, we are here just to provide you information on the 285 corridor, what CDOT's got going on there, and more specifically, the information on Kings Valley interchange. So, Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Right, I'm getting this PowerPoint set up here. Yes, just confirm that you see that real quick.
Yep.
Lovely. Cool. Well, thank you for the introduction there, Shirley and Jenna. Don't have a ton of time here, but we're going to roll through the CDOT 10-year plan, some of the history that we've encountered with the Kings Valley interchange project, and then also an update with where we are today. And we've got some cool visuals to share with you. So starting with the 10-year plan, until 2019, CDOT began the process to build a 10-year vision plan for state's transportation system, meeting with Colorado's and every county, and connecting with residents and their communities. Thousands of common studies became the basis for a prioritized list of transportation projects. The resulting 10-year vision document identifies transportation improvements across state. I know it's hard to see, but on the right of the screen here, we have the US 285 corridor improvements near Pine Junction listed for $60 million. It's a little misleading title-wise, but we'll get to that in the next slide here. So this corridor improvements near Pine Junction includes widening of US 285, four lanes, building a depressed median, adding acceleration and deceleration lanes, interchanges between Richmond Hill and Schaefer's Crossing, and then last but not least, an interchange at Kings Valley Drive. So just to jog memories here, some history of this project. So what was actually the 2004 Preferred Alternative that came from our Environmental Assessment, or what we call an EA? The alternative at the time was this one that you see up on the screen. This was an interchange, I guess, just west of Kings Valley Drive. The approximate cost for this interchange was 15 million. But if we were to do the full buildout of two lanes in each direction, we'd expect this cost to be closer to $30 million. So what caused this project to get put on hold? 2017, we started bringing this product back to life, and we brought it to design 2018 and 2019, and then in 2019, the reevaluation process that's required by the federal government. We discovered that there's a historic property known as the Conny Coffee Shop that was going to be directly impacted, or there'd be a chain of use with this property. And so that spun us into needing to go through the 4F process or reevaluation. So just real quick on the 4F process here. 4F process requires any project. CDOT can't approve the use of land from parks, recreation areas, wildlife and waterfowl areas, or public and private historical sites, which is what we have with this project. And so through the 4F process, CDOT's required to do a couple of different things. We're required to see if there's a feasible improvement in interchange configuration that avoids taking the historic property or any other Section 4F properties. Secondly, we need to determine if the alternative interchange configuration has a lesser or no Section 4F impacts when compared to the original alternative. And then with this process, we need to document whatever we end up coming up with, and then proceed with the final design of the configuration. And just to put this in perspective, if we were to go through the Section 4F process and take the historic property, this whole process would take approximately two to three years, which would push our final design or shovel-ready project to late 2025 or even early 2026. So some other things that we have to consider through Section 4F is safety, traffic operations, environmental impacts, rideaway impacts, and last but not least, maintenance activities. And one thing that's not something that's considered through the 4F process is cost. No matter what alternatives we're able to come up with, you can't disregard a alternative due to cost alone. And just to give you some more background on this project, so in total, so far, we've looked at 16 different interchange configurations. Nine were done in 2004, and then we recently completed an alternatives evaluation that looked at seven different configurations. And then here's a timeline of what we've been working with. We got the 2004 Environmental Assessment, and then between 2004 and 2017, we discovered that there's a, or the Conny Coffee Shop became historic, and then we started looking into the design of the preferred alternative from the environmental assessment. And then 2019, the Section 4F historic property pushed us to look into new alternatives to avoiding that historic property. And that leads us to where we're at today. So we wrapped up that alternatives analysis in 2021, and we were expecting to begin design on that alternative May of 2022 with the goal of wrapping up by the end of 2023. And so here's what we've come up with, the new alternative. And to put some perspective here, we have Come and Go Fuel Station to the bottom of the screen. If you want to head to Denver, you'd pass underneath the bridge, make a left, and then you'd be able to access 285. Similarly, if you wanted to go Bailey, make a right-hand turn and be able to head toward Bailey to that. So Kings Valley Drive remains at grade or at the same elevation. We're actually going to be raising Mainline US 285, and this actually should ease some of the the comfort of driving through this section as you're coming down some steep grades that are over towards the left side of the screen, and you actually head to some steep grids heading towards Bailey. This alternative avoids direct impacts to all the historic structures. The property to the right away, we have fewer impacts. And then we will actually have similar impacts to the north that we were expecting through the 2004 Environmental Assessment. And here's another similar image of what this new alternative looks like. So Bailey's over to the left this time, and Denver is over to the right, and Kings Valley, or the Come and Go Fuel Station is across the bridge. Estimated cost of this project is between $35 and $40 million, and that does include the full lane full four-lane buildout on US 285. And just to, I guess, compare to our 2004 alternative analysis, that one was around 30 for the full buildout. So now jump into some of our next steps. So since we wrapped up our alternatives analysis, we're now looking to take that alternative to design. We're bringing a design consultant onboard to complete final design and do the full environmental reevaluation. We'll bring them on May 2022. And then once we get started in design, we're expecting that to take about 18 months to finish design and get all required clearances such as rideaway and any other things that we need, or utilities and things like that. And then that leads us with a shovel-ready project by late 2023. And then while all that's going on, CDOT's going to actively look for funding to be able to make sure we build this project.
And I think just adding on to that, Brian, I think that's a great summary of where we've been and where we're at. And I think that kind of reties back to the original kind of 10-year list that Brian had showed you, so I encourage folks to go check that out. It does show this project being listed in there for $60 million. At this time, that is unfunded. But essentially, what CDOT has done is created a priority list. So as funding comes in, whether it's federal stimulus dollars or other grants, we have a place that we've already identified for projects that would be CDOT's priorities to put the funding on those. So kind of tying it back together, I do encourage folks to check that out, and we really appreciate you giving us a chance to give you an update. And I think here's the project website. If you are curious to see more information, please check that out.
Thank you both. Thank you very much. The visuals really help a lot. So thank you for sharing those.
Absolutely.
Next, we have Senior Long Range Planner Heather Gauthelus with Jefferson County Planning and Zoning, and she'll be talking about new plan development for the Conifer area. And she wants you to know, and we do, that you all have a say. So Heather?
Thank you. And thanks for having me here tonight, and thank you so much for doing this virtually to accommodate the snow. I really appreciate that. So hopefully, everybody is able to see my screen at this point. Tonight, I'm going to give a update of cases that are happening in planning and zoning that have new status since the last meeting in November. Also, all of the case manager info is on each of the screens with each case so that people can just reach out directly to each of those case managers if there are any questions about any of these. First, I want to talk about one of our bigger picture projects, which is updating our wildfire regulations. And I'm excited to say that Phase 1 of those wildfire regulations were approved in January. These regulations expanded when a defensible space permit is needed for building permits and added proof of fire protection requirements for all building permits, not just those in our wildfire overlay district. We have started working on Phase 2 of wildfire regulations. We're expecting that these may be diving into some issues that need a little bit more work, and we want to determine what adequate fire protection means at each phase of the development process. So from rezonings to building permits, what is adequate fire protection? And then we also want to evaluate the WUI code and other regulations from other jurisdictions for any additions that we might want to put in our regulations to address wildfire hazard. There are currently 28 cases that are active in the Conifer area, and those are listed on the screen. The ones, well, the ones that are listed on the screen, I should say, are cases that have changed since November, and those are the ones that I'm going to be going through in the next few slides. Before getting into the first case, the pre-application case, I just want to remind everyone what a preapplication is. So preapplication is a very preliminary request from an applicant. They have an idea of what they might want to do on their property, and they talk to staff about it and get some ideas of what the really big issues might be on the property, like if there's a flood plain or drainage issues, things like that. They are pretty preliminary, and after the input, they receive about 40% to 50% of these preapplications never even move forward to a formal application. Because they are so preliminary, there isn't any public notice. The first preapplication is number eight on the land use case list, and it is a property that will probably look familiar to quite a few people. It is the Conifer Heights property. And it is here nestled in between 285, Highway 73, and Barclay Road. The applicant a few years ago came in for rezoning to increase the number of residential units that are allowed on the property, and that was denied due to quite a few factors. And the applicant has since decided that they want to see what they could do under the current allowed zoning, which does allow for some commercial uses and up to 60 residential units and some community use, such as a community park. Next, I'll go into the rezonings, and a rezoning case is when somebody wants to change the land uses that are proposed on their property. So if they want to go from an agricultural use to a commercial use, that's something that would require a rezoning process. There are four points throughout the rezoning process that's shown on the screen that community involvement is encouraged. The first is the community meeting stage, and then as we move through the process, there is a formal referral process where, again, it is great to get community input at the early stages of the process. So at this stage, it would be a great time to get input on a proposal. There are also two public hearings, one before the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, where people can submit either written testimony or they can come and speak at those hearings. The first rezoning case that I want to give an update on is the Conifer Center at Kitty Drive. Kitty Drive is right here, and then there's US Highway 285 and County Highway 73. This is behind where like the O'Reilly Auto Parts is and the Staples. The property is vacant, and it did have some zoning on it that allowed for some commercial uses, but the applicant wanted to expand some of those uses, so they requested to rezone the property. Initially, those uses included a primary use of outdoor storage. And at that time, it was denied by the, recommended for denial by our Planning Commission. With that feedback, the applicant really wanted to change their uses around and remove that primary use of outdoor storage. And so the Board of County Commissioners, because of those changes, remanded the case back to the Planning Commission. With the removal of the outdoor storage, the Planning Commission did recommend approval. The Board of County Commissioners then approved it in January. The next rezoning is one that has been around for a while, and it's kind of still in almost like a limbo status, but I do want to just make sure, you know, it's still out there and hasn't been withdrawn or avoided out. It is the rezoning behind the Safeway Center off of Light Lane, and the proposal is for 188 residential units. The plan recommends residential with a maximum of four homes per acre, and like I said, they are still anticipating keeping this case alive, but they are resolving, trying to resolve some outstanding issues. The next case is a new case that is off of Turkey Creek Road. Here is Turkey Creek Road and the intersection with South Deer Creek Canyon. This is a pretty simple rezoning where the property already has a house on it. They wanted to do some improvements to the house, found out they have split zoning, so there's partially zoned mountain residential one and partially ag two. And they want to rezone so that they can do some additional building on there or do some additional work to the house that it currently exists on the property. So no new homes with that one. Next, I want to talk about a few subdivision plat cases. And a subdivision plat process is a case where the uses are already established, but this is where they get into a lot of the more technical issues such as drainage and access in great detail. The first plat case that I wanted to talk about is off of Hillview Road. Here's Highway 285 and Hillview. This property was a proposal to subdivide for two single-family detached units, and the board did approve that subdivision plat in December. The next plat case is off of Eagle Cliff Road. Here's 285 Our Lady of the Pines Church and Eagle Cliff Road. The property is 41 acres, and the applicant is proposing a subdivision for three single-family detached lots. The next plat case is in the Kings Valley area. And here's Kings Valley, the Kings Valley Shopping Center, Highway 285. This is 30 acres, and the applicant wants to subdivide for two single-family detached lots. Last process, or the last case that I wanted to talk about is the site development plan. Again, the uses are already established, and we look at a lot of the more technical issues. So this is the old Bank of the West building that is in the Aspen Park area. Here's 285 and Dahman Road and Conifer Road. And the applicant would like to repurpose this building and make it into an auto parts retail store. It went from the first referral to the second referral since our last meeting. That is everything that I have for tonight. Thank you very much. Again, all of the case manager info is on the slides if you want to get in contact with them for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. And also, we did send out the development updates in an email. We'll get another one out to you soon. So if you are on our email list, you can take a look at those too. So next, we're going to be talking about fire and ice, phenomena that we can't control, or can we? And I think we've got Inner Canyons Chief Sherla, Elk Creeks Chief Ware, and then wildfire specialist Ben Yellen, John Mandel, and Ben Moses to talk about a lot of things. You're up.
Thank you, Shirley. Good evening. Yes, tonight you're going to hear from myself and Chief Ware with Elk Creek. You're going to hear from our Call Conifer Wildland Division with Captains Yellen and Mandel and one of our experts, Ben Moses. We also have the head of our mod on tonight, Jason Papinfoz. First, Chief Ware and I just want to give a brief update where we're at as far as consolidation is. Excuse me. So as many of you know, for about the past 18 months, districts of North Fork, Elk Creek, Indian Hills, and Inner Canyon have been meeting to discuss the possibilities of consolidation. We all engaged in a consolidation study, and we hired AP Triton to do that study for us. The study is complete, and it is up on all of our websites right now, so we encourage you to go and read that. The chiefs are continuing to meet and work off that study plan. And I'm going to hand it over to Chief Ware, who's going to kind of explain where we're going from here. Chief?
All right. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, to dovetail into what Chief Sherla said, we've been working on this, and we're really trying to start to move forward and formulate plans. We actually have representatives from all the boards that we had our first meeting last night. And we're starting to get the boards discussing and talking about what this possibly could look like moving forward. We're trying to develop some goals and objectives to really help guide us in figure out what we're going to do and how it will look when everybody gets together. It's a lot of work. We're going to be reaching out for a lot of public input. That's going to be really important. We do want to involve the public in this to make sure it's it's right for all the taxpayers. We believe in the chiefs. We believe it is. We'll be able to increase services, and we're also going to be able to provide better services, more efficiencies. We could probably, Chief Sherla and I could probably talk about this for the entire time, but in respect to the the other members of our agency, I'd like to turn it over to Captain John Mandel at Inner Canyon.
Good evening, y'all. Thank you for letting us have some time here. I'm going to talk a little bit about our CWPP Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That has been in the works, the rewrite, for over a year now. The actual document can be viewed on our Wildland website, and you can reach that via either Inner Canyon or Elk Creek's website. Click on the Wildland tab. It takes you to the same place. Once you're there, click on Planning, and you can see the link to the PDF for the CWPP. Keep in mind that that link is just a PDF, and it's not very interactive. It's just there to read. If you would like to do some interaction with some of the maps on there, just scroll below on the website where that link is, and you will find some interactive maps where you can zoom in and play with the maps a little bit. And so we are at a point now where we've had meetings with stakeholders, meeting with community ambassadors, meetings with general public, and presentations. community ambassadors, meetings with general public and presentations. We've gotten positive feedback from the the document that's been public facing right now. And we are at a point now where we are looking for signatures from the chiefs, the county and from the state to make it the official document. And then we can move forward. And with that, that becomes our work plan for our programs offered through the the wildland division of both districts. And those those programs include the fuels crew and the wildfire suppression module. Now, these are not new programs, but in collaboration between the two districts, we've been able to expand the capacity of those programs to serve the the residents of the districts in a in a better manner. So with that added capacity, we are looking forward to really looking at the the results and and the recommendations from the CWPP and implementing that district wide. So with that, I want to turn it over to our fuels crew lead, Ben Moses.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ben Moses. I'm your fuels crew lead. I have roughly nine seasons of experience with a diverse background in wildfire. I've worked with engine crews. I've worked on hotshot crews, helitack crews, as well as various fuels crews. In addition, I'm also a resident up here. I live in the Highland Pines community. And what I'd like to do today is just share with you presentation that I put together just to talk about some of the things that we do and that we're looking forward to doing in coming seasons. So some of the things that I'd like to talk about is this last season, we had quite a few accomplishments. We were able to remove over nineteen hundred cubic yards of biomass from our communities. We also were able to remove fifty-one roadside hazard trees from the Bell Mead community as one of our cut projects. In addition, we assisted with various prescribed fires around our districts. In addition, we have have all hazard response capabilities. So we've assisted with two motor vehicle accidents, four backcountry rescues, two landing zone preparations for helicopters, one stroke patient, one overdose poisoning and six vegetation fires in our districts, all that we were able to assist with. So going off that, for our season to come, the season we're looking forward to, we're going to continue the operation of our chipping program. We'll have the signup opening soon. In addition, we're looking at eleven acres on mitigation projects. We're going to have one in the Doug Ranch area as well as the preserve at Pine Meadows. And in addition to this, we have another eighty acre, eighty acres worth of projects in the Glen Elk area that our wildland divisions also working on. In addition to this, we're going to continue to offer a very exceptional fire response and initial attack resource that we are and continue our all hazard response to assist our line staff and make sure that we're offering as much as we possibly can to our communities. And that is all I have.
Are Ben or is Ben going to talk? Ben Yellen?
Oh, sorry, ma'am. That was that was our presentation. I just wanted to reiterate that we are expanding with the CWPP and if there's any questions to feel free to reach out with any of our programs. Thank you.
Thank you all. That was amazing information and you are doing amazing work more than I've ever seen in the past. So thank you so much for all of that. So next, we have a lot of fire and snow outside. The streets are definitely an issue up here. And so we have Jefferson County Road and Bridge represented tonight. We have District Supervisor Taylor Perrigo and Carlos Satensio, who's the operations manager. So if you can give a little bit of update about the roads and plowing. Taylor.
Yes, good evening. Like Shirley touched on, my name's Taylor Perrigo. I'm the district supervisor for our District Four area, which includes Aspen Park, Pine, Conifer, all the way down to Deckers and some other areas. So I'm, I just had a short presentation I was going to go through pertaining to our new snow procedure for Jefferson County. Can you see that? Okay, so.
Yeah, we can see.
Okay, um, yeah, this is the Jefferson County Snow Procedure Revision for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So pertaining to the mountains, you know, we didn't change quite as much. First, I'll go over our mission statement. It is to provide for the safety of the traveling public to sorry, let me, um, do the efficient use of manpower and equipment to remove accumulated snow, provide traction materials where required on ice covered roads and maintain access to the roadway system for the traveling public to provide this service throughout the county within acceptable parameters of budget and resource allocation. So the next slide goes over our snow priorities and this is just how we categorize our roads depending on traffic volumes and different uses and things like that as far as school zones and fire and police. So you know, our priority one roads are main arterial streets that provide for high traffic volumes. I will say that in the Conifer area, we do not have any priority one roads. None of them meet the requirements for priority one. Most of our major roads up here fall into the priority two category, which is major subdivision collectors, school zones and school bus routes. So all the school bus routes up here, many major roads like one twenty-six Pleasant Park, Highway seventy-three, Shutter Mountain, all those areas fall under this priority two. And and those are the first roads we usually try to hit. While the snow is falling, such as this evening when they were out there, this is their first objective to try to get these cleared for emergency services, buses and just the traveling public in general. Just because when the snow is falling, it's hard for us to keep up with much more than our main, our main thoroughfares in this category. Once the snow stops or starts to cease and we have a little time after we get the main priority twos cleared, that's when we start to go into the priority threes, which are residential and other local roads that carry moderate to low traffic volumes. And then lastly are the priority four, which are cul-de-sacs and other dead end rounds, roads carrying very low traffic volumes. So we usually stay out long enough to hit all four of these. It may take us some time to get to the priority threes and especially the priority fours. Our main objective, like I said, is priority twos until we really get into the cleanup stages. And that's when we can really branch off and go into these other areas. Couple of the issues that we have with these, the priority fours, the cul-de-sacs and stuff, that's where we run into a lot of parked cars and trailers and RVs and and obstacles like that. So we do ask people if, you know, more that they keep the bubbles and the cul-de-sacs clear, it allows us to better clean up those. Otherwise, we may be forced to simply back up and pull one strip out of those if it's not safe for our large equipment to go in and out of to clean. And I will say that we are working on a GIS mapping system currently that will let people, citizens go on and check to see what roads are what priority. So you can look at your roads or any roads in the county, once we, once we finish that and see where you fall in the priority list. The following list is our, is our phases. So this is kind of when we head out, this is kind of what our drivers and operators go through to clear the streets. Phase one is initial opening of all priority one through two streets in that order. severity of the storm may delay response time for priority two streets due to the fact the initial opening of major arterial streets requires the multiple lanes be plowed in each direction. So like I said, we don't have any priority one. So phase one for us is opening all priority two streets. That's usually what that is. Phase two is plowing and sanding problem areas having steep inclines, curves, bridges or overpasses. Widening of any priority one through three streets deemed necessary. Repeat plowing of all streets initially as snow continues to accumulate. So this is once our drivers kind of have it under control and the priority twos, they can kind of branch off and start taking care of some of the main neighborhood streets and things like that. Phase three is removal of packs of snow and ice on all priority one through three streets where possible and deemed necessary as snowfall accumulation stops. Plowing and sanding operations on priority four streets will will take place as resources, the resource availability allows. It could be several days after the snowstorm has ended before priority four streets are initially plowed. Intermittent standing is necessary by our priority. I will say on that, you know, that's kind of when we're cleaning up, if we do get pretty frequent calls, calls on people asking about emergency services or classes. We just want people to know that we are in constant contact with, you know, fire, police or bus, just kind of public schools. If they need our help, they will call us and and we will make sure they will get to you through our streets. So don't be scared. If we haven't gotten to you yet, you have an emergency, we will, we will make sure they get to you. And then phase four is the storm event is over, continuation of widening operations to improve safe travel and prepare for additional accumulation during subsequent storms. That's just the final cleanup. Generally, our widening of roads and things like that are done by our larger machines, our motor graders. We don't really like our trucks to do much more than clean the asphalt itself due to dangers of getting too far off the road and losing trucks. And the next slide, this is, this has to do with the plains, so this doesn't really apply to the mountainous areas, but this is part of the updated procedure. The next slide is for the mountains. So the first point touches on snow plowing and standing operations will not take place from nine PM to three AM. This is nothing new up here. This is the way it's been for many years. We don't have enough people to do multiple shifts, so our drivers do one long shift every day. So they they don't get a ton of rest sometimes and they're right back at it. So that that won't be any different. The next point is when snow depth is seriously impeding vehicle mobility and melting is not forecasted, temperature consented to hours, all remaining residential streets will receive service after the above priorities are met. And that is the same point. It really hasn't changed much for what we do up here. And then lastly, please note that we do not remove packs or ice from residential streets that are passable by passenger vehicles, cars. And this a lot of times pertains to our milling's roads or dirt roads up here. We generally don't like to put our salt sand material on those due to in career, the driving surface and it's really, it's really bad on the road surface and our motor graders have a lot of down pressure. So a lot of times they can cut more snow pack off than off the asphalt streets. So a lot of times we try to stay away from that if we can on small side streets. And then some clarifications that we like to tell everybody is when plowing is performed, windrows of snow across driveways are created and opening of driveways are the responsibility of property residents. That's something we get a lot of calls on and just want people to know during the initial storm, you know, for cleaning up afterwards, we will try to make sure that your driveway stays clean if it's been plowed. But while the snow is falling and are initially planned roads, we just simply need to focus on opening those roads for the safety of the traveling public. This one doesn't pertain too much, but there are some sidewalks. This is sidewalks are the responsibility of property resident. Snow from the windrows may roll off on the sidewalks and is a responsibility of the property resident. Most of ours are more community sidewalks than property owners. Next was postal regulations require residents to clear snow in front of mailboxes to allow for mail delivery. This is a big one for us because they won't deliver the mail to people if there's large windrows. When we go out and do widening and stuff on the cleanup stages, generally we get it pretty well around the mailboxes, but same as kind of that first point is we are, when we're first plowing, we just simply need to open the road. So we, there might be some snow in front of mailboxes. And then lastly, the practice of pushing or throwing snow onto or across Jefferson County streets endangers the traveling public as well as county snowplow operators, Jefferson County residents, as well as private contractors may receive a warning and or summons for snow pushed on the county streets and rideaways from sidewalks, driveways, parking lots, et cetera. I would generally try to go out and talk to people before, you know, we take any drastic steps, but that is something that's very important because our trucks may only come through once and they and they may not get a chance to come back through. So that causes a real big hazard on a lot of the streets if it's piled up. Lastly, all requests for emergency snow removal should go to Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. If the request is valid, they will notify the Road and Bridge Division and we will respond as soon as possible. And lastly, Carlos and I are both on this call and and we are open to answering anybody's questions and feel free to give us a call anytime at the Shaver's Crossing Shop and and that phone number is three oh three two seven one five two four three. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I would just like to say that, thanks, thanks, Taylor. For for the PowerPoint presentation, but also if anyone has any questions, my direct line is three zero three three two four. Excuse me, three, three zero three two seven one five two zero four. So you can call me if you have any questions about snow removal as well. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Carlos, and thank you, Taylor, for that presentation. You have a big job ahead of you tonight and maybe the rest of the year. So that might be good. But thank you very much. Okay, next we, next we have Senator Tammy Story with the Colorado State Legislature and she's going to talk, give a Senate update. Tammy.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Shirley, and thanks so much to all the folks that are here with us tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to join you and share a little bit about the legislative update from the Senate side. It's, it's great to have the opportunity to work with so many of these different agencies and and departments that are here. I can tell you that I work closely with Representative Lisa Cutter, who will speak next, as well as the county commissioners and Chair Leslie Dahl Kemper is with us tonight. We all have much in common and and connect on a regular basis, working on a number of ideas, but have also worked with the fire chiefs that have been here tonight and the other local fire chiefs from our various volunteer fire departments up here. And it's great to have so many really good partners. So I served this past summer fall on the wildfire matters review committee. And I know Rep Cutter will share a fair amount about that as well. It was a great opportunity to learn so much more about wildfire mitigation and suppression and recovery as well. We worked on policy ideas as we gathered information from various stakeholders that visited with us and came up with a number of different bills. One of the ones that I am carrying out of that committee is a wildfire mitigation outreach bill so that we can really make that outreach more robust across the state, in particular in the Wui area. And we are working with the Colorado State Forest Service, who is kind of managing a a working group, a task force that comprises of them and also the Department of Fire Prevention and Control and also the US Forest Service. And they are going to work up a a more robust program for their National Wildfire Awareness Month that is in May. So they'll, I'm anticipating that this bill will pass through both chambers and get signed by the governor. And we have about a million dollars of funding going towards it to really improve that outreach effort because it just feels like perhaps some of our residential communities don't, maybe they recognize that we have had a number of wildfires in the last number of years, but maybe not the importance of what their responsibility is for mitigating their own property and also helping their community in that process as well. I think the Marshall Fire that occurred at the end of December was probably a real eye opener for many of us. I represent the town of Superior, which is one of the two communities that was heavily impacted. And I can tell you that nobody believed that we would have a fire that would blast through a residential community, sort of suburban community at the foot, at the bottom of the foothills in such a short period of time and completely decimate nearly eleven hundred homes in a very short timeframe. And so we need to change how we view wildfires. We know, I think, of course, up here in the foothills that we are a community at risk and and need to work on that, but we also need to kind of expand our outreach in that regard. I'm also working on a fire suppression pond spill where we can hopefully utilize some rural ponds for fire suppression activities. And so that that's separate and apart from our wildfire matters committee that we worked on. We have significant funds from the ARPA effort from the American Rescue Plan Act. And we are working on developing policy ideas and bills going forward through the legislature as a team on mental health and behavioral health as well as housing and economic recovery. And so those bills will be in process very soon and looking forward to being able to utilize those federal dollars to help all Coloradans in so many ways. So just want to thank you so much for our, my opportunity to be here and feel free to reach out to me. You can find me on the General Assembly website and I'm happy to address your concerns. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Tammy. And now we have Representative Lisa Cutter. Lisa.
Thank you so much, Shirley. It's great to be here as always and it would be fun to be there in person, but it is pretty nasty out there, I have to say. So glad for the opportunity to do this from the cozy home here. I just want to echo Senator Story. It's just great to have such a wonderful collaborative community. And I always enjoy hearing from And I always enjoy hearing from friends on this panel and agencies and things that are doing wonderful things. And I love the opportunity to collaborate. So, so let's see, I've been working on lots. It's heating up at the legislature, as I'm sure y'all know. It is wildfire week. Lots of things in the House at least, lots of wildfire bills are moving through. I have two bills, two wildfire bills up in committee tomorrow. And I look forward to Senator Story's bill coming over to our side, the one she talked about in education and outreach. I'll, I'll champion that in the House. So I'm really excited about that. It's a great, great bill. So the one that I, I'm working on lots of wildfire issues, but the one that I'm really particularly excited about and I'll highlight here is a state match grant program for local communities, local governments. And what we're doing is setting up a fund so that if you, a state fund, we're asking for a $20 million investment from the state this year to seed this grant fund. And if you apply, if you have ongoing consistent funding dedicated, some kind of revenue dedicated ongoing into the future towards mitigation in your community, then you are eligible to apply for this grant. And I'm really excited about that in particular because we, we have to encourage and incentivize partnerships, right? People, communities, we really want to get all communities moving towards working, working on resiliency and mitigation over the long term. So that bill is up in committee tomorrow and I'm, I'm very hopeful about that. We've got lots of good bipartisan support because this is an issue we can all care about, right? And also I'm working on a, a bill to transform recycling in Colorado. I talk about this a lot. If you listen to these, I'm talking about zero waste a lot. And it's really, really an important issue to me because we have a beautiful state and we don't need any more landfills and excessive waste that we're experiencing. And we don't, part of the issue is our recycling rates are abysmal. I think it's about 15% is what of our waste is recycled. Other states are maybe around 35% and more. That's, I think that's a national average. So we're not doing a good job. We need to do better. And I'm working on legislation that'll set up recycling all throughout the state, make it more consistent. And then another piece to incentivize businesses to reuse the materials that we're going to, we're going to collect and just, just help businesses be able to do that. We want to have a, a more of a closed loop system where we use the recycled materials to create new raw materials for businesses right here in Colorado. So that's, that's pretty exciting. I've worked on a food pantry grant, which I'm working on with Senator Story for food pantries throughout, throughout the state. And I know we have several in Jeffco that have benefited and we're really pleased to be able to work with them on this. A behavioral health bill, as Senator Story mentioned, we've had some important work coming out of the task forces this summer. And I'm going to be working on some of those issues and some, some bills to support small business. We passed a bill through committee today about saving on small businesses on their filing fees. So lots of good stuff. I love the opportunity to talk with you about it and same, you can find me as well on the General Assembly website. And always willing and happy to hear from you and entertain your questions. So thanks for the opportunity to chat tonight.
Thank you, Lisa. It's so exciting to hear about everything that you're working on. I'm especially excited about all of you that have talked tonight are working somehow on wildfire. And that is so incredibly important. So I think, I think some great things are being done and it's very exciting. So thank you all for that. And next we have Commissioner Leslie Dahl Kemper. And I know she's going to be talking about that also and a few more things. So Leslie?
Thank you so much. I am going to pull up our PowerPoint here. You're with me. Just take a quick second. Can you see that? Okay? Yeah, okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. Thanks so much. And I'm going to turn my camera off if I can here. I'm not sure if I can. Thanks so much, everyone. It's great to see you. And a huge thanks to the Conifer Area Council for hosting tonight's town hall. I also want to give a special shout out to Carlos, Taylor, all of our Road and Bridge team that works very hard throughout the day and into the evening when we have snowstorms like this to keep our community safe. So thanks to that incredible team and it was great to hear from both of them. We wanted to share a couple of notes with you. Wanted to talk a little bit about the budget and some of the financial realities facing Jefferson County. And we also wanted to talk with you a little more about wildfire risk. So on that note, as we look at the, the budget, beginning in 2023, the county is facing up to an additional 20 million in budget cuts. And that's to the general fund. And as you know, the general fund supports every department and elected office in the county with the exception of our public libraries. So some of you may be asking, well, why is this happening? Why are we seeing these potential reductions now? And in 2020, the economic shutdown caused the county to bring in much less revenue than usual. And as a consequence, the Tabor revenue limit formula has been lowered. We'll talk more about that in just a second. So this means the county has less revenue to work with. And as a result, as you can see on the slide, that can impact everything from response times to lagging infrastructure, which we know, you know, the longer we wait to take care of it, the more those costs increase down the road. And there's some other examples on the slide as well. This next slide shows the difference between the impact of what's called the ratchet effect. And the Tabor limits in fact apply to revenue, not spending. And those revenue limits are calculated differently for different governmental entities. The formula used for the state is different than the formula, the Tabor formula used for the county and local governments, and it's different for school districts as well. So this chart talks about one of the lesser known factors of the Tabor revenue limit calculation, and that's known as the ratchet effect, something I mentioned a moment ago. Each year, the Tabor revenue limit increases by a certain growth factor from the prior year. Now in 2020, the county received much less revenue due to the economic shutdown during the first year of the pandemic. So that caused the calculation of the revenue limit to ratchet down to decrease by 14.5 million, meaning that point forward that Tabor revenue limit now grows from that lower starting point. And you can see the difference in that slide. So what impact does that have on us in terms of financial realities? We talked about the revenue gap, the ratchet down impact. We're looking at Tabor refunds of nine million in 2022 and 10 million in 2023. Some of you, I'm sure many of you received your Tabor check. I know we talked about that during the last town hall. And while we have reserves, we're at our limit. If we begin to draw down any further on reserves or rainy day fund for the county, our bond ratings begin to go down. So that is no longer an option for the county. You also see other examples like expenditure consequences and of course, those community impacts we talked about. How can you get involved? We will be holding in the spring, community budget conversations. We'll have six of them. Right now, we're doing some internal planning across the county and certainly in our foothills communities as well. So stay tuned for more information. I really want to draw your attention to the community survey and the link that's in the PowerPoint. Please take just a moment to tell us what your priorities are. Because a budget is more than just a bunch of pages filled with, with numbers and services and programs. It really is a document about what we value as a community and, and where our priorities lie. And our decisions as commissioners are much better informed when we know what your priorities and your values are. So that's, that's some information on the budget and the financial realities facing Jeffco. I wanted to share some quick wildfire information with you as well. You heard Heather talk about this a little bit earlier in her presentation on planning and zoning. And this is the county regulation, one of the, it actually in part came out of recommendations from the wildfire task force. One of those recommendations was to strengthen county regulations and enforcement on defensible space. And you heard Heather talk about what we approved last, just last month on that front. In addition, our county emergency management team is working on updating the countywide CWPP. It's, it's a number of years overdue. And that update will also include defining the WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface, which is so important because it helps to create clear boundaries for mitigation and forest restoration efforts. We may have some state funding to help us with that as well. And these are some other examples of work that we have underway. I just want to draw your attention to two. Jeffco Open Space is going to begin forest mitigation efforts, including 37 acres at Meyer Ranch in Conifer. That will be visible from 285. If you have any questions, I'll share my contact information at the end. And then also Jefferson County was selected as one of seven priority locations statewide for the Colorado Strategic Wildfire Action Program. And this is really a tremendous effort. I want to give a quick shout out to Ben Yellen with Inner Canyon. Ben did a great job pulling together key stakeholders, including folks at the county level. I was involved in the meeting, Jeffco Open Space, our fire chiefs and others to really think strategically and thoughtfully about how we can best leverage these dollars, which could be upwards of $750,000 or more for large landscape mitigation efforts. Here's some other examples of, of work that we have completed or work that is underway. I also serve on the Colorado Fire Commission, which has been tasked by Governor Romer with really looking at growth and development in the WUI. So the work we're doing to define the WUI in Jeffco is also work that's happening at the state level. Again, a shout out to our legislators, including Representative Cutter, Senator Story, and many others. Last year was an incredible session in terms of funding for wildfire risk reduction efforts. And we really thank them for their leadership on that front. And if you have any questions, this is how you can contact me. My email is here as well as my phone number. That comes directly to me. And if you want to communicate with any of the county commissioners, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Kerr, or me, this is a, a general email, commish@jeffco.us. Thanks so much, everyone. Appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you, Leslie, so much. Lot of good work. I wish we didn't have budget crunches, but you know, I guess that's the way it goes. Just a couple of things I wanted to add at the end here. If you are on the Conifer Area Council email list, you will get another chance to take the five minute Conifer Trails Survey. We really do want your input on that. The survey will close May, March 1st. So if you could do that before then. And if you aren't on the email list, go to coniferareaconsul.org and it's on the Trails homepage. As you can see here from tonight, there is just so incredibly much going on in Conifer. So please tell your friends, your family, your neighbors to go to coniferareaconsul.org and watch this very important virtual town hall meeting. And I'd like to do one last shout out to Tiffany and Christie at RE/MAX Alliance for their community support of tonight's town hall meeting. And our next town hall meeting will be Wednesday, April 20th. We sure hope that we can see you in person, see your faces, no masks required. We're really looking forward to that. So see you then. Thank you to everyone for joining us tonight. Good night.